You ready to start?
Sure.
Let's go, sir.
I'm ready to start.
Let's call the meeting order.
Sir, we'll call the meeting order. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Welcome. A 1A call, roll call and possible excuse of absent members of the governing body.
Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
President.
Commissioner Lázaro Ojardo.
President.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
President.
Commissioner Daniel Chávez. Commissioner Ricardo Medina. And Commissioner Mario Bracamontes. We do have a quorum and Commissioner Medina is out of town. He has to be excused.
Okay. Do you have a motion to excuse?
Move to excuse.
Second.
Oh, we have Commissioner Bracamontes here.
Commissioner Chavez is on the way.
Okay. So we have second, right also, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes, they're excused.
Thank you, item 1B, pledge allegiance and invocation by Luis Pazán.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, you have entrusted us as stewards of your creation. Please guide our hearts as we make our decisions. We seek you first in all we do together. We give you our business, our customers, and our workforce. May we always be mindful of their service. Amen.
Amen.
Please, 2A proclamation proclaiming Veterans Day. Event center.
Somebody here for the Veterans Day or?
Yes. Y'all should have somebody for the Veterans Day. Anybody here for the Veterans Day? Proclamation? Can y'all come forward?
There they are.
Yes, sir, come on up. All of you.
Oh, y'all.
Y'all deserve it.
Good afternoon, gentlemen.
Good afternoon, sir.
Thank you for having us.
Mr. Lucio?
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Thank you for having me, Mayor.
Thank you for sharing, sir.
How you doing, man?
Very good. How are you? We're still doing some more. We're gonna do some more events. What's up, man? Good afternoon, sir. Thank you for sharing, sir.
How are you?
Good, sir.
How you doing, sir? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good, thank you.
Thank you, Ed.
Go on, Fred.
Thank you.
We're gonna be on the front here. Thanks, sir. No, thank you.
Thank you, good.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Yeah, we're talking, stay down there. Come down, y'all. Yeah, we'll come down. Come down. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I guess for the freedom, so we can take the proclamation up. Yeah, just. Okay. At this time, I'm gonna read the proclamation. It's an honor to be amongst you, gentlemen. I myself served and it's a privilege. And this is what freedom is all about. So the individuals that are out there, this is why we have the freedoms we have today. I'd like to give them a big round of applause before we even get started. Where it has long been our custom to celebrate November 11th anniversary of the ending of World War I by paying tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle and by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas in the intervening years, the United States has involved in other great military conflicts, which have added millions of veterans, living and dead, to the honor rolls of this nation. And whereas to protect the nation they love, our veterans step forward when America needed the most in conflicts around the world. Their sacrifice and resolve helped destroy the enemies of freedom and save millions from oppression. In answering history's call with honor, decency, and resolve, our veterans have shown the power of liberty and earned the respect and admiration of a grateful nation. And whereas all of Americans veterans have placed our nation's security before their own lives, creating a debt that we can never fully repay. Our veterans represent the best of America and they deserve the best America can give them. And whereas in order to expand the significance of honoring our veterans, the United States Congress approved on June 1st, 1954, the changing of the name Armistice Day to Veterans Day. A legal holiday to be celebrated with appropriate gratitude to the men and women who served and have served in the United States military. And whereas, I urge all citizens afar to recognize the valor and sacrifice of our veterans through prayer and ceremonies that include a community Veterans Day parade, a live fireworks display on Saturday, November 10th, 2018, through downtown Farr. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of City of Farr, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the city commission, do hereby proclaim November 11th, 2018, Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everybody stay there, nobody move. Nobody move. Can you come up here, man? Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, staff, and veterans. Thank you for your thoughts and consideration for our proclamation today. Your support and patriotism has strengthened our relationship with our great city leaders afar. On behalf of all veterans, our sincere gratitude and appreciation, and thank you so much. And I've got a little poem that I'd like to share.
Sure.
For today. Veterans, of course, thank you for your job well done. Thank you for the battles won. Thank you for the battles fought. And thank you for the freedom bought. So, thank you so much, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Ladies.
Dr. Bob, let's go with them.
Guys, go to get a nuts.
Carrillo. Carrillo. Mario. Help him sit down so he can face this way.
Sit here.
Don't they cover you?
There's a wire, he might get tangled up on the wheel. He'll go to.
Oh, that's okay. It's for you. It's not for us.
Of course.
All right, ready? One, two. One more. Ready, everyone? One, two.
No, I can make it.
You shut my get gum.
Yeah, what you writing?
Can I have just a pretty number?
Thank you, everybody. Go ahead and go on to item 2B. Proclamation proclaiming Municipal Court Week.
Is Judge Carranza here?
Good afternoon.
Welcome, Judge. You, um, one, two, three of you guys go on this side. Just shift down, shift down. One more, right there, perfect. Okay. Go ahead, Judge.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm proud to introduce the part of the court of the municipal court staff. The rest of them are back holding down the fort so that we could be here with you today. Municipal Court Week is something that celebrates, celebrated statewide, but it's the first year that we are celebrating it in the City of Farr. So we're gonna have various events going on this week within the court. And also tomorrow will be set up here at City Hall to interact with citizens and things like that. So, we're so happy to be here. We're proud to be the judicial branch of the city and we thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yes, thank you for being here, ladies.
Thank you, Mr. Sir.
So, am I, this, you only have a few more staff?
Right, there's a, including myself, Mayor, there's 10 of us.
10 of you, wow. It's good to see young ladies in leadership position. That's good.
Thank you.
So whereas the municipal court plays a significant role in preserving public safety and promoting quality of life in Texas and the great City of Farr. And whereas the City of Farr is committed to the notion that our legal system is based on the principle that are, that an independent, fair, and competent judiciary will interpret and apply the laws that govern us and that judges and the court personnel should comply with the law and act in a manner that promotes public confidence in the integrity and impartiality of the judiciary. And whereas the city council recognizes the Constitution and the laws of the state of Texas and supports the municipal court of the City of Farr in complying in such legal requirements. And therefore, I, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of Farr, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the mayor and the mayor's office and the city commission, do hereby proclaim the week of November 5th through the 9th, 2018, as Municipal Court Week. In wind as whereof, I hereby set my hand and cause to seal the City of Farr to be affixed on this 5th day of November, 2018.
Thank you, Mayor.
Ladies.
Except for Maurice. Judge, thank you. Congratulations. Thank you, everybody. Onto 3A, public comments. We have two sign of public comments tonight, Commissioners and Mayor. Number one being Chris Garcia. Chris Garcia? Mr. Garcia? He's coming. Mr. Garcia, how are you, sir?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Chrisanto Garcia.
Yes, sir.
I live here in Farr, Texas. 3700 Silver Crown Point, pre-up Kalish Dust.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you. And, well, you done a good job. The rest of your people, they tried hiring out. So, I know you tried, but some of the people didn't try hiring out. Lot of lies. So, thank you very much for your help. And I hope it don't happen again to anybody here in the City of Farr. It's a nice city and the taxpayer is the city. You know, some of these people, they think they're, they own the city now. That the population of the Farr own the city. And, I heard you're doing a good job, sir. So, so the deal is already clean there. What gonna happen? Are you gonna put a wall or something that they're gonna, now you, those guys, whoever, gonna be there? You know where I'm talking about Trancasa?
Right.
Are they gonna wall it or put Kalish?
Mr. Garcia, we can't respond to you directly. You're, you're the only one who can speak to us. And this, just so you know, we're not, it's not that we don't wanna answer you. We're not allowed to.
Okay. Okay, another thing, I don't know if you can answer this. On, on the judges, judges, I know they're appointed by you guys. I don't like the idea because they throw the ball to the judge, there's time. And the guess what? The judge do whatever you tell him. It's, it's with you guys. It's not with the public. So, I don't like the idea. The judge turn to give us false information also. You know, it's his standard and standard the time. Three, three years of my life, you know, it was a nightmare. So, I thank you again. And see if you can work up with a wall, please. And there's, there's some weedy lots there in the neighborhood. One, one house looked like a jungle. And that those, they've got some mosquitoes, snakes, whatever, you know. And ratones, mouse. So, we wanna get rid of those. We don't wanna have in the city there, that kinda stuff. So, thank you very much. Keep up the good job, sir. And don't, don't, don't let these guys, the rope, keep them tight. Because you let them do whatever they want to. And I think you're gonna have to retrain some of these people because they were trained by somebody else and they got bad habits. So, sorry to tell you that, but I heard you're doing a good job, sir. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Wally, could you make sure that a quote in person, people go out there and be sure that the weedy lots, why we have an ordinance, right, to make sure that, that everybody knows that we're addressing the entire city?
Sure.
And then, check on the situation with that property owner, with, if they, so we're gonna put another tenant. Obviously, we're gonna, we're not gonna let the dust situation happen again.
Correct. Okay. Sure, will do, Mayor, thank you. The next person up for public comments, Dr. Casey Fletcher.
Afternoon, Dr. Mayor, Commissioners and, and staff and audience out there. For once, I'm not the oldest person in the room. That was a relief. And I, I have a little bit of a complaint. I live at 504 South Diplomat. My name is Kennedy C. Fletcher. And still getting noise light vibration nuisance from Costco. And in that vein, I, I wanna talk about the fire codes not being enforced. And I was misquoted, not quoted correctly on one of the minutes. But I, I'd like to enter into the record if I could, please. International Fire Code 2012, 501.1, 503.1.1, 503.2.1, 503.3, and especially 503.4, which means, you know, enforced, don't let anybody park in the fire lane. And I misspoke at previous meeting, civil service, where I said the wrong business. It's the Home Depot. Did you know the Home Depot's been a, a source of tax and a, a good neighbor to have? Because they're way the heck over there and they're zoned correctly. But I, I called it at home, but I meant the Home Depot. And also, Mr. Garcia was referring to Trancasa that's moved over. And while we have this on there, I've got a signed petition and, you know, I've already brought it up. I'd like to move a, a lamp in the mast. That's a metal extension from TexDOT right outside Farr City Hall where it's redundant. I'm paying for electricity, all the taxpayers are, that could be used outside the Boys and Girls Club. Because with daylight savings time, it's for children's safety. And I'd like to submit that, when I copy this later on. And, and also, I have signed up for public hearing and, and Trancasa is the next one. It shows the entrance to it. All this stuff I learned while I was on a PNZ board, you know. And I was dismissed from the board and still not, that wasn't right. But this lacks a fire lane, marking, there, there's no sidewalk there if you look up and down. These are all code things that go in with any business. That house in the back to the right is, seems to need a CUP. And on and on it goes. And this is a business that has outside storage. It's in a limited industrial, so it should have a wall where you can't see the, the trucks and stuff that are being stored there. And there's a rut made that's collecting rainwater and is gonna breed Zika mosquitoes. I was sort of surprised to find out that Farr has had a case of Zika virus, but not really. And finally, before I run out of time, I, I'd like to mention too, on the fire code, that the, the north side of this building, this very building that we're in, seems to lack the proper fire protection, detection, and smoke detection.
Mr. Mitchel, time is up.
Thank you very much. And I'm for Chief Luengo, 7L, thank you.
Thank you. 3B, Public Care and Development Service cases. Anybody sign up that's legally registered? Thank you. 4, City Managed Reports. 4A, Mayor City Commissioners, submission of Sales Tax Collection Report for October 2018. We're proud to report that sales tax are up 13.89% from this time last year. And overall, we came out number one in all the RGV.
Great.
So, very good. 4B, Property Tax Collection Report, September 2018. We're at 96.16%. We're up 0.22% from last year. So, all that's good news. City Engineers Reports, 4A, I'm sorry, 4C, the engineers reports in your packet. Anybody have any specific questions we can answer? Great. 4D, City Events of Interest. We have a couple of events of interest. The Finance Department was awarded the Transparency Star in Debt Obligations Award. We're the first and only city in Idago County to receive this award. Texas Comptroller Glenn Hager announced the City of Farr is the latest local government to achieve the specific debt transparency goals through the Comptroller's Transparency Star Program. City of Farr received Transparency Star in the area of debt obligations, which recognizes entities whose websites show visual and narrative detail on outstanding debt, tax-supported debt obligations, and historical bond elections and more. So, great job for finance.
Congratulations.
PDC, November 10th, we're gonna have a ribbon cutting for Terricon Company. 1506 Mid-Cities Drive here in Farr. Everybody's invited to come out. On December 10th, we have the Second Annual Welcome Back Winter Texan Golf Tournament. It'll be at Theater de Sol Golf Club, 700 East Hall Acres Road. People are invited to come out and play. Event Center, November 5th, Tri-City Orchestra, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It's free to the public and it's courtesy of PSJ, the Tri Orchestra Concert. On November 10th, this Saturday, is our Annual Veterans Day Parade. We did talk about it earlier. Time, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Free to the public and to participate also, there's still time to sign up if you want to. It's a City of Farr Parade and fireworks displaying and paying respect to and gratitude to all the men and women who have served in our great nation. So, thank you to everybody. On November 16th, we have Intocable at the Farr Event Center. Concert is from 7:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Ticket prices are $95, $85, and $75. 53 and 35 general admission. Remember, it's November 16th, so show up if you wanna show up. Also, the Farr Department was awarded the State Homeland Security Grant, the amount of $11,504. They're gonna purchase some replacement hazmat equipment with this grant. So, good job, chief. Thank you. Next is 5, is Consent Agenda. All the items on Consent Agenda are routine and non-controversial. You can approve it in one, in one motion.
Okay.
What's up, bro?
Any discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We have some time-sensitive items I recommend going to executive session.
Executive session. And according to section 551.071 to 551.087 of the Texas Government Code, the Farr Board of Commission hereby gives notice that it is convening into executive sessions to discuss the item listed in public portion of the meeting agenda, the time line being 4:24. Dr. King? Ms. Moore?
Okay.
We're back. The time is 6:20.
Sir, we're back in open session. Thank you, Mayor. Item 6A, Consideration Action If Any, An Ordinance, A Main Ordinance, 2017, 55. Relates to a number of authorized civil service personnel with the Fire Police Departments. This is the third and final reading.
Do you have a motion?
What's up, bro?
Second.
Any discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
6B, Consideration Action on Ordinance, Creating an Annual Registration Inspection Process for Multifamily Dwellings. This is the third and final reading also.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
6C, Consideration Action If Any, An Ordinance, A Main Ordinance, 2015, 28. And this is the second reading. Staff recommends approval. So, move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Sir, 6D, Consideration Action If Any, An Ordinance, A Main Ordinance, 2010, 30. Revising and updating the accounting policies and procedures manual. This is the first reading. We had some things that happened, some spoofing that happened with emails, some wire transfer policies we need to update. This closed that loop, that closes that loophole.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Yes, sir, item 6E, there was a typo. It's supposed to be Consideration Action If Any, Resolutions Appointing or Reappointing Three Members, Not Five Members, to the Theater de Sol Golf Advisory Board. All members, the three members want to be reappointed.
Second.
Any discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
6F, Consideration Action If Any, Resolutions Appointing, Reappointing Seven Regular Members and One Ex-Official Member to Library Board. All the members except for one member, Ms. Isa Guire, says she cannot serve. Mrs. Claudia Garcia, that's on the South Side Library Board, has, has expressed an entrance to serve on this board also. She'll be the link between the two boards.
Yes.
Okay.
Staffs recommend approval.
Yeah. Second.
Any discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it passes.
Next one is seven administrative, 7A, Approval of Certified Appraisal Roles as of January 25th, 2018. Yes, sir, this is a requirement. We have to approve the tax roles and the amount, estimated amount of $19,278,158.
Second.
Any discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
7B, Consideration Action If Any, On Change Order Number One, and Acceptance of the Jones Box Park Improvement Project. As complete and authorizing the release of final payment and retainage in the amount of $44,317. The project is complete, Mayor Commissioners. The one change order was the amount of $10,000 for additional drainage improvements.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
7C, Consideration Action If Any, Authorizing City Manager to Execute Letter of No Objection Submitted by the Texas Eastern Transmission LP in reference to the South Sugar Road Improvements. Yes, sir, we are constructing South Sugar Road from High Line South, approximately 1,300 feet. There's a gas pipeline that is crossing the road. This outlines the guidelines how we construct over the pipeline. What's up, bro?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
7D, Consideration Action If Any, Authorizing City Manager to Begin Planning and Budgeting Process for the Design and Construction of North and South Road, which will be North Cana Street, connecting 495 to westbound Frontage. On the westerly border of 281 and between Expressway and 495, since the interchange is gonna be coming down soon and being for improvements, we wanna punch a road from, from 495 to the Expressway. It'll be in line with the TexDOT property and the property that we own.
Okay.
We want a permission to go ahead and start pursuing that project. What's up, bro?
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Consideration Action If Any, Authorizing City Manager to Reallocate Additional Funds from the Certificates of Obligation 2017 Series Funds toward construction of the Downtown Park Projects. Yes, sir, we went over this in executive session. We're adding some amenities to Downtown Park. We're allocating additional $800,000 to the project. What's up, bro?
Second.
Any discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. 7F, Consideration Action If Any, On Eastman, Access Eastman Agreement for Lots 1 and 2, Lone Star National, Lone Star Bank Subdivision, Farr, Dow County, Texas. There are approximately 10 acres north of the bank on 495 and 281, the one the city bought that's gonna be our new communication center. They're in need of an access eastman. The access policies of TexDOT is not gonna allow them another entrance. So, they want an access eastman off our property to, to develop that property. They do have developers and they have a plan. So, it, it looks good.
Okay. Do you have a motion for approval?
Second.
Any discussion? That was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
8G, Consideration Action, correction, Consultation with Board of Commissioner and Action If Any, Authorizing City Manager Negotiate Music Lineup and Headliner for Hubfest 2019 on Saturday, March 30th.
That's discussing executives.
Yes. This just consultation commissioners. Next one, Consultation with the Board of Commissioners, Dow County Drainage District Number One, Drainage Policy Shift and Effects on Development. This also just consultation item, no action. I, Consultation with Board of Commissioner on the Appointment and Hiring a Police Chief.
As discussed in the second session, yeah.
Yes, sir. Eight A, Consideration And Action If Any Ratifying Two Purchases Of Two Police Canines. Yes, sir, we had a time-sensitive issue. We bought two police canines. Money was budgeted. One is for explosive detection and one is for a green canine. Staff recommends approval.
Okay.
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Um, B, Consideration Action If Any On A Purchase And Installation Of Two Play Structures From Extra Play Incorporated Utilizing Buy Board Contract five one two dash sixteen For City School Parks Under Construction. Yes, sir, these are the two play structures we're gonna add to Alim and William Park And Dr. Long Park. Uh, both of them together total four hundred twenty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-six dollars. This is a budgeted item.
What's approved?
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Uh, eight A, Contracts And Agreements, Consideration Action If Any On Interlocal Cooperation Agreement Between Global River Valley Development Council Number One And The City of Far For Number One Addressing The City And E T J. Yes, sir, this re-up to our agreement. We do our, our own addressing and to control our E T J, we do the address in E T J. It's just a re-up of an existing agreement.
Right.
Staff recommends approval.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Uh, and nine B, Consideration Action If Any On Agreement Between Peace And Thorn, uh, Corr- Thornton, To Use Property, To Use Property Located On South Sioux Road For Overflow Parking For The Event Center. Yes, sir, this is, um, on the south west, east corner of Sioux Road And two eighty-one. Uh, this is the property right next to the stripes. We use it for overflow parking for the event center.
Okay.
What's approved?
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Sir, Consideration Action If Any On Contract Extension With Dow County EMS For Now One Services. Uh, staff has recommended approval as discussed in executive session.
So, moved.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Uh, D, Consideration Action If Any On Renewal And Canine Policing Agreement Between Value View Independent School District And The City of Far For Canine Services. Yes, sir, this is, this is an agreement we have. It's fifty dollars an hour for the canine services for the school.
Okay.
Taken.
Any discussion?
Yeah, real quick.
Yes, sir.
Do we have enough canines to, to service all the, all the different entities that are, we're using, uh, we're, we're interlokal in with?
Well, right, right now, sir, the way it's working is, uh, we have a schedule, on-call schedule for the morning. And so, what ends up happening is, uh, either P S J, I S D or Value View will give us a call. Uh, and they'll ask us, okay, we need you to go check this school. We do have enough canines. Uh, right now, we have, uh, three narcotic dogs in addition to the two other dogs that we're gonna be purchasing right now. But to answer your question, yes, sir, we have enough.
Okay, good. I was just curious.
Great. Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Uh, nine E, Consideration Action If Any On Subscription Agreement With Lexus Nexus For Services. Yes, sir, this is an inquiry tool to, uh, find property owners and, and research, uh, legal and development services will be using it.
Taken.
Discussion item, uh, where's Melanie? Is this, is this the software that you were working with the court system to identify, uh, those so-called bottlenecks that I told you that we want our, uh, compliance, our code compliance, be able to send out notifications? Well, is this a software that's gonna be able to communicate between you, your two departments?
Yes, Mayor, that's correct.
Okay, great. I have no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Nine F, Consideration And Action If Any On Vendor Agreement With County Withoutal County Community Services Agency And The City of Far For Bravo Zulu Grant Assistant, Assistant Veterans In Need With Their Water Bill. Uh, yes, sir, this is a grant from the county. It assists veterans in their water and electricity bills. We have to have interlocal to accept the funds.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So, moved.
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Uh, nine G, Consideration Action If Any Authorized City Manager To Enter Into A One-Year Service Agreement With Unsolved LLC, Which Is Code Red For Mass Notification Systems. Uh, project number eighteen nineteen dash oh one, five two five, I P Q zero zero seven dash zero zero three. We gotta make those shorter, purchasing wherever you're at. Um, yes, sir, this is, uh, this will replace our existing, um, name of the pro- Everbridge, I'm sorry. Our existing Everbridge, this, uh, service we use to notify the public of emergencies and departmental staff. Uh, this is at a drastically reduced rate. We're going from eighteen thousand dollars a year to ten thousand dollars a year. And this does, new service does include social media notifications also. Staff recommend approval.
Okay.
So, moved.
Taken.
Any further discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Nine eight, Consideration Action If Any On Proposal From Decimal Communications For Sponsors For The two thousand eighteen Far Christmas Posada. Yes, sir, Decimal Communications Come With A Contract. Uh, they wanted fine sponsorship for our posada and we're not a, we wanna get money, so offset the costs. Her wants to sponsor it.
What's approved?
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Consideration Action If Any On Proposal From Cyril Hermanos Vasquez For The Rental Of Ice Skating Rink For The Christmas Holidays. Staff very recommend approval, uh, pending they get their own insurance. Thank you.
So, moved.
Taken.
Okay, any further discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Uh, nine J, Consideration Action Awarding Lease Purchase Contract To Bank Corp. Government Leasing, excuse me, And Finance Corporation. Uh, project seventeen eighteen oh one, five eleven, zero S, zero two three dash ten. Yes, sir, this is for the upgrades of the bridge camera system, the amount of two hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
What's approved?
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor? Opposed? It passes.
Uh, Consideration Action Awarding Supply Contract For The Purchase And Deliver Concrete Mix. Uh, yes, sir, this is, uh, concrete mix for city use. It's a ninety-seven dollars a cubic yard. Staffs recommend approval.
So, moved.
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Uh, nine L, Consideration Action If Any Authorized City Manager To Award Contract For City Far Manhole Rehabilitation, Project Number seventeen eighteen sixty-one, five eight seven, C zero one one dash one one six. Uh, staff is recommending to, uh, award to Southern Trenchless, amount of two hundred fifty-three thousand, nine sixty-two. They were the low bidder out of five bidders.
So, moved.
Taken. Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Uh, nine M, Consideration Action If Any Authorized City Manager To Award Service Contract For The Pickup Of Used Tires And Rubber Scrap Removal And Disposal, Disposal And Recycling Services, Project seventeen eighteen oh one, five one seven, S zero one five, one three nine. Uh, con- City Commission, uh, were recommending Texas Land Reclamation On Adana, Texas For Seventeen, seventeen seventy-five, uh, per load.
Okay.
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Uh, nine N, Consideration Action If Any Ratifying Contract With Public Safety Communications Building To Include Reallocate Additional Funds From Certificate Of Obligation two thousand seventeen. Uh, some of the upgrades that, uh, the commission wanted in the, um, A C system and the humidifiers and some energy efficiencies, uh, came in at about six hundred thousand dollars. We're gonna add to the project to cover those costs.
All right.
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Consideration Action If Any On Engagement Of Estrada and Ojosa And Company Incorporated For Financial Advisory Services In Connection With Issues Of Sixteen Million, Four Hundred Forty Combination Tax And Revenue Certificate Of Obligation. This is just solidifying the agreement we already had with them for the bonds we just issued.
Okay.
What's approved?
Taken.
Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Nine P, Consideration Action If Any On Interlocal Agreement Between The City of Far And P S J, I S D For The Agricultural Barn. Uh, yes, sir, we're providing the land. They're providing the building and all the infrastructure. This will be located just north of our sewer plant on South Thai Road.
Okay.
What's approved?
Taken.
Any discussion? No? Counselor, we're good? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Thank you. Consideration Action If Any On Interlocal Agreement Between City of Far And P S J For The Natory Muse. Uh, yes, sir, we are gonna build a new pool. Uh, they, all the requirements are in the interlocal. Everybody's agreed to it. Staffs recommend approval.
Okay.
So, moved.
Taken.
Counselor, we're good?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
Nine R, Consideration Action If Any On Interlocal Agreement Between The City of Far And Dow County, Texas For Utility Relocation For Linear Park. Yes, sir, this is, uh, there are tunnels at, uh, I Road, Ridge Road, Moore Road And U S two eighty-one that the county's gonna be building to, to, that way they don't go over at grade crossings at, at intersections. It's gonna be a tunnel underneath the road. City has utilities in the area. Uh, this interlocal will cover the cost of all the utilities we need to relocate in the agreement.
Yes, Commissioner.
Before we, do we have to do a motion first to take a discussion? Oh, you looked at me late. I just have concerns. On these tunnels, is it in the agreement that they're gonna have lighting? They're gonna have emergency, uh, communications and cameras?
The agreement, the first interlocal agreement that passed where we were, uh, uh, we finally agreed to the terms with, uh, Precinct Two was, part of it is that we were not gonna contribute the million dollars. We're getting ours for free. They would patrol it. They would put, uh, lighting. They would put the public, uh, phones and also they would patrol it on the county's expense. Nothing in the City of Far. For the entire length of the City of Far, hiking bike trail. And also, the, the tunnels were mandated also because we wanted to be sure people were able to cross, uh, at these high-end arteries or, uh, traffic points, so they wouldn't have to run across. And so, all those are in, in the interlocal, correct?
They're a separate agreement.
Yeah.
Um, this one only covers the relocation of any utilities that interfere with the location of the tunnels.
But in the other agreements, we do have the cameras, the lighting, the emergency phone system.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Those were negotiated. I believe they were made part of another interlocal.
Yes. They are.
They are.
Tell me.
Yes, they are.
I'm good.
No guessing. Any further discussion? Otherwise, I need a motion for approval.
So, moved.
Taken.
Taken. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
The nine S, Consideration Action If Any On Interlocal Agreement Between City of Far And Dow County, Texas For A Relocation Of The Gun Range For The Linear Park. Yes, sir, there is a linear park, I'm, correction, there's a gun range on Moore Road By The Canal Bank On East Moore Road. Um, the linear park actually goes around The Canal Bank, uh, so the mayor has negotiated with the county for them to relocate it on other city property at their expense.
Right. Just for clarification, we will be, uh, first, we will build the new, uh, gun range for the public and for our, uh, users, which include the county and federal agents and the police department. And once that's built, then we'll make, uh, use of that property that currently is on, as, off Moore Road as you stated. And we're likely gonna turn it into a park, a public park, so that way people, uh, as they're running along the, the hiking bike trail, don't have to worry, worry about stray bullets. But in fact, we'll actually have an area where they can actually relax and stretch and, and lit up by, uh, by us. It'll be owned by the city, a park, in partnership with Precinct Two. Yes, sir.
So, moved.
Taken.
Any further discussion? I was all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes.
What's your turn? That's all I got.
Wait a second?
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. We are adjourned. Time's six thirty-seven.